Good evening and welcome. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting, we do not anticipate having public comment. First, we'll confirm that all members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond with "I". Artie Crocker?
Hi.
Natasha Spada?
Hi.
Jean McKnight?
Hi.
Chair is obviously present. While at the moment, Board Member Paul Albert is not present, we do anticipate his arrival imminent.
No, we, actually, he will not be attending. He's on vacation.
Excellent. Very good. So with that clarification for the record, Paul Albert is absent for this meeting on a well-deserved vacation. For others participating in the meeting, please be aware that others may be able to see you. Anything that you state and share will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website at needhamma.gov unless otherwise noted. Some basic ground rules for this meeting, which are designed to allow for an accurate public record. We don't have any speakers tonight, so I think we could probably just proceed and then I'll ask for any motions, comments or questions individually as we proceed to the agenda. Just one, one note. I see a number of our members are without video. I think the proper public protocol is that we all have to really remain on, on video. I don't think that we really ought to be off video while we are present. I apologize, but I, I think that's proper protocol. When I spoke to Town Council a while ago, I had done the same thing where it's fine. The first item on our agenda tonight is to decide on the agenda for the town common on a de minimis change. We've already taken a vote on the relief that's been noted in our decision. The question really is, now that we vote the decision itself, has anybody, does anybody have any comments or questions on the decision? Jean is shaking her head. Artie, do you? Or, or questions, Natasha?
I do not.
Neither do I. Then can I have a motion to accept the major project site plan special permit number 2009-06 amendment?
Somewhere.
As per our package.
Action.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Jean is, and Lee, is that, is the form of that motion sufficient?
That's fine.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. No discussion. I'll come to the vote in alphabetical order. Artie Crocker?
Bye.
Natasha Spada?
Hi.
Jean McKnight?
Hi.
And the chair is "I". We have unanimously decided to accept the decision as written. I believe the next one, we, we have not voted the relief on Babson. Is that right?
That's correct.
So we need two motions. One, first of all, to vote the relief and secondly, on the decision. Jean, would you like to make a motion? For?
Yes, just one. I'm just looking over. I had a couple of, but a couple of questions about wording of the decision, but it doesn't go to the substance of the decision. So I think it's appropriate to, to move the, the decision. So let me.
Before we move the decision, I think we have to vote the relief.
That's what I mean. Excuse me. I'm looking for the paragraph.
It's page four, Jean.
There it is. Therefore, the board voted. Okay. I move that we grant the requested major project site plan special permit amendment pursuant to bylaw section 7.14 and section 4.2 of the decision dated May 3, 2005. Subject to the plan modifications, conditions and limitations found in the draft decision. And this pertains to Babson College at 231 Forest Street.
You have a motion? Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing that I'll come to the vote on the relief per Jean's motion. Artie Crocker? Natasha Spada?
Hi.
Jean McKnight?
Hi.
The chair is "I". We have unanimously decided to approve the, the relief for that special permit amendment. Now, Jean, to the question of some comments that you had that are not.
Yes. A few things. Page two. Exhibit three. It says conservation commission or administrative approval. Shouldn't that be conservation commission administrative approval?
I'll have to check and see. Look at the document. If it's commissioned, I'll change it. If it wasn't, I'll leave it as is. I don't know without looking at documents.
Well, just, I mean, I mean, you know, I don't know if this, this is falls into play here, but when we have an administrative approval, it actually doesn't come before the conservation commission. The commission or conservation agent actually gives the approval.
Who does, Artie?
The, the, in this case, it would be Deb gives the administrative approval. So it actually doesn't come before the conservation commissioners.
So I, I, I need to check that, Jean. If, if it needs to be corrected, I'll correct it.
Okay. And then page four. In, in paragraph 1.13, in the last line, the word, the word, it's, it's, it's a, it's a noun and which should be set spaced back. Additionally, it is set back. Whereas it's, it's done as a, I mean, excuse me, I misspoke. It's done here as a noun setback, but it should be verb setback. Okay? And then we just voted to grant the relief. And it says we voted five to zero. And so we'd have to change that to four to zero, right?
Right, because Paul's not here. Correct.
Okay. Then on page five, there's something I didn't fully understand. Section 3.9. The petitioner shall secure from the Needham Department of Public Works a sewer connection permit or impact fee. How does one secure an impact fee? The wording is off somehow.
Well, that's, that's our standard wording.
It is?
Yes, it is.
Shall secure a sewer connection permit? Shouldn't it say, or pay an impact fee?
Okay, fine, fine.
Yeah. And Lee, we can make that change going forward on the template.
Yeah. Okay. And then on the top of page seven, there's a reference to compliance with all requirements of state, federal, local boards, commissions of other agencies, including but not limited to the Board of Selectment, and then it mentions other agencies. Is that, is that our standard wording? Board of, to include the Board of Selectment? It's hard for me to understand exactly what the Board of.
Change the select board.
And also it should be select board if we're going to mention it all, right?
I think that is our standard paragraph, but I'll change it to select board.
Yeah, okay.
And then again, for the template. We.
And those were my comments for, for changes. So now it's a question of moving to approve the decision. So I move that we approve the decision with regard to Babson College 231 Forest Street. What was it called? A batting, a baseball batting building? As, as set forth in the draft decision that is before us tonight.
I'm just going to ask for clarity. When you say the, the decision in your motion, you mean the decision amendment. Is that correct?
Oh. Move to approve the decision granting a major projects site plan special permit amendment. So I added those word, a decision granting a special major projects, I can review a special permit amendment.
Excellent. Do we have a second on Jean's revised motion?
Again, yeah. Artie can have it, or I can. We agree what we concur with Jean.
Therefore, there's no discuss, therefore, there's no discussion. I apologize. My diabetes alarm is going off. No discussion. I'll come to the vote. Artie Crocker?
Hi.
Natasha Spada?
Hi.
Jean McKnight?
Hi.
The chair votes "I". We've unanimously decided to approve the decision amendment for a major project site plan special permit number 2005-02. One note, Natasha, you have to buzz in early on this game show.
Already, already mumbled. I got it. I'm okay, I'm.
All right, we still have one more, okay?
Thank you for the tip.
All right.
Natasha. Natasha.
Can I have a motion? We have all, with respect to the property of 140 Kendrick and the rooftop outdoor deck. We've already voted the relief. So now we're just voting the decision. Can I have a, does anybody have any comments or questions on the decision? Jean is shaking her head. Natasha is too. Artie, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions. There was just some, it was just a very minor thing that a question was something going to be clearer.
Does he mean that the egress?
Yeah, it was, I mean, for me, I, for me, I didn't see a problem, but I think some, some other members wanted to see some clarity. And I don't know if that was coming to you, Lee, as a just to verify that it came or letting the building commission to take care of that.
Well, I think we, we had asked that the plan be modified to highlight the, the two egress doors, which they, which they've done. So they've given us a revised drawing that shows that.
We're good. Okay.
So can I have a motion to approve the decision? More specifically, the decision dated, what's the date of this decision, Lee?
Today's date.
Today's date. With respect to the major project site plan review special permit amendment to the decision, application number 99-2.
Somewhere.
We have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Natasha, Jean beat you again. We have to fix.
No, I, I, I was, I'm, I was on mute, so I was trying, but I, I was waiting for Jean to go and Artie couldn't second himself.
No, no, no. Why is he nice?
Not that I haven't tried, Natasha.
Tonight's really the comedy hour. Good that we're having some fun on the planning board here. So we have a motion. We've had our discussion clearly. I'll come to the vote. Artie Crocker?
Hi.
Natasha Spada?
Hi.
Jean McKnight?
Hi.
Chair votes "I". We've unanimously decided to approve the amendment to major project site plan special permit number 99-2 with respect to the property at 140 Kendrick Street for a outdoor roof deck. Now, Jean, we come to our minutes. Our first set of minutes is May 3. I think your changes in red are more clear. I see on page two. You have a question about whether
Yes.
I didn't comment to the design review board or the ZBA.
Yes, I, I was, I wondered whether the design review board was miss, misspeaking or at the meeting because we don't provide comments to the design review board. They provide comments to us.
Should have been the ZBA.
Yeah. So I think we should make it the ZBA, even though the speaker might have said design review board mistakenly. And then the other thing, and this was pointed out by a member of the public who, believe it or not, went to the trouble of reading our minutes and sent an email. And there's a reference to the historic, in the same paragraph, to the historical society, which should be the historical commission. You see that?
Yes, that's correct.
It's in the fourth line from the bottom.
Oh, I got it. Okay.
Yeah. And the other, the one on page five, I think I've, after looking at it again, I think I, there was no reason for me to highlight it. I think when it says this has to do with the revising the temporary outdoor seating, outdoor display policy to extend the applicability to April 1, 2023. And Mr. Albert noted the date should be 4/123 is the outside date. They misnomered stated the governor has approved outside seating through. I assume that also is 4/123. And that's why we're we're extending it because the governor extended it and then we're extending it.
We're extending it. We're modifying our policy so that it's consistent with what the.
Consistent with the government. Yes. So there was no reason for me to call that out. The way it is, is fine. On second reading, I realized that. Then on the next page, page six. In the sentence that Mr. Block on the second line, on the second, second paragraph, page six.
Yes.
The end of the second line, Mr. Block stated that we'll be making a condition based on a subsequent condition. I mean, that's an important comment to make. And then there's a sentence, "It is not clear."
Delete it.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It is not clear what that sentence refers to. Okay, I got it.
Has the delete question mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on page seven, under the report from planning director and board members in the fourth paragraph that starts with Mrs., Mrs. Spada stated they had a community housing workshop. "The board should support revised zoning to allow for different types of housing in different areas of town. This needs to be revised pre-zoning." I don't know what that means. What that was intended to mean.
I'm reading it again.
I mean, to leave it out, it still makes, if it was simply left out, it would make sense. The board should support revised zoning to allow for different types of housing, but should be by special permit if that was what you said.
Yeah, this is.
But I don't know what this needs to be revised.
Yeah, by, by pre-zoning.
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
I don't know what that means either.
Let's just strike the word, let's just strike the word pre-zoning. Or to connotate the same meaning.
Okay. This needs to be revised, but should be by special permit?
Sure, that sounds good.
I mean, we need, but should be by, it's just, it's just, this needs to be revised by special permit? I mean, is there any other option?
Well, but we haven't decided on it yet, right?
Okay.
By the way, the whole MBTA community is saying is to make it by right and not by special permit. That's the intent.
I know, I know. That's what the MBTA communities, that's what the MBTA communities act is, is making us do.
It's an option.
So do you want to read it, Natasha, the way you think it should be? Because it was your statement.
I think, yeah, I'm reading here. There, okay. Community Housing Workshop, the board should support revised zoning to allow for different types of housing in different areas of town. I think we should, we should strike out the, that this needs to be revised pre-zoning and but should be by special permit because we don't even, the board should support revised zoning and whatever that zoning ends up being, once we vet it, we'll figure out what it is. But to be premature saying what kind of, you know.
Okay, so strike out.
This until permit.
Yeah, it's true. They're two short sentences, I think. To strike them both out. Okay, that's makes sense to me.
And then it says, Mr. Crocker agrees. They need to look at it, but not by right. So then that was your opinion.
Natasha, I think you did express the point that our zoning did need to be revised. That was your, so I think we should keep that in.
Right, the board should support revised zoning to allow for different types of housing in different areas of town, period.
She already said that in that sentence.
This needs to be revised.
Right, that, 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 maybe this needs to be revised, period. But, but everything else until permit can be taken out.
That's fine. Yeah, I, I concur with that.
So leave in, this needs to be revised?
Correct, and just period.
Okay. Then in the next sentence, it may be okay because I think I know what Paul Albert was saying. He noted the following correspondence from the record, "An email to support and vote positively on a town meeting warrant article." But at last night's town meeting. I think what he means is we got this communication, but the town meeting was last night. Should I just leave it alone?
I would think.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that was, that's what he's saying. Okay. Just leave it alone. All right.
So then although we haven't taken the vote, I see that you have no further clarity beyond your red lines for our minutes of of May 17. So can I have a motion?
No, May 3.
Well.
May 3. Oh, oh, you mean May 17. Yes, that's right. Just red line.
May 3 and May 17. We've already looked at, right?
I think we do, Lee, can we do two minutes and one motion or do they need to be in separate motions?
Two minutes and one motion.
All right.
Okay. I move that we accept the minutes of May 3, 2022 with the changes discussed tonight. And that we accept, excuse me. Let me begin again. I move that we accept the minutes of May 3, 2017 as redlined with the further changes as discussed tonight. And I move that we accept the minutes of May 17, 2022 as redlined.
We have a motion made by Jean to accept the minutes as discussed in her motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh. Natasha got you on this one.
Buzz is broken.
Your buzzer's broken already. So Natasha has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, but good humor nevertheless. I'll come to the vote. Artie Crocker?
Hi.
Natasha Spada?
Hi.
Jean McKnight?
Hi.
And the chair votes "I" to unanimously approve the minutes of May 3 and May 17, 2022. Now comes the report from planning director and board members.
I have nothing to report except that Natasha, we're trying to set up a planning meeting for the next housing working group. I don't know. Alex, do you have a, a date that you're looking at? Maybe we can see if Natasha's available?
No, I don't have a date. I was waiting for Natasha to give me her schedule because I think she's the busiest one. So I just figured I would get her availability and then send some other things to people. And also while I'm up here, I just wanted to remind everyone to go sign the decisions. Adam went. Jean is going tomorrow and will be notarized. So Artie and Natasha, maybe while you're in town, could sign those decision signature sheets. That would be awesome. Thanks very much.
So Alex, is this during the day or in the evenings for this, for this meeting, for the?
Daytime.
Okay, daytime. Okay, I'll look right now.
Okay, yeah, and send me, send me a couple of options, then I'll follow them with the rest of the crew. Jean, I'll be sending you an email once I hear from Natasha. But I figured I'll start with Natasha because you're so busy that I think it makes the most sense.
But I'm only, I'm only acknowledging my own signature so others could sign it afterwards.
That's right.
Right.
Jean, is there a better day for you in general?
No, tomorrow afternoon works fine for me. No, no, we're, we're leaving. We're leaving for Western New York on Thursday. So I can't, I can't do it Thursday or Friday.
Okay, so next week sometime? Or tomorrow afternoon?
Are we talking about notarizing the?
No, the housing, the housing.
Well, the housing, yeah. So I am unavailable Thursday and Friday. I, I, I I could fit in a meeting tomorrow if you wanted to.
I can't do it tomorrow.
I can't do tomorrow either, but I could.
Okay, so let's look at the next week.
Could you do Friday?
Friday of next week?
Of this week.
No, I'm going to be in New York.
Okay, Friday of next week?
I would rather not try to zoom family, you know, visit.
Yeah, no, no, no. What about Friday of next week?
So that's getting a little close for our meeting, which is the following Thursday. If we could meet early next week, that would be better.
Yeah. I'm on the board of our condominium and I want to do a site visit Monday morning at 10. But I could do Monday morning at 9 or at 11?
Let me, let me send you some times. Mondays are not good for me, but I'll figure out.
Send some times just so that.
Ideally, it would be, it would be Monday or Tuesday. Is that correct?
Or even Wednesday. I mean, I don't know what these schedules is, but you know.
Your Wednesday are fine.
Wednesday morning is great. I have a dentist appointment at 11, but as long as we finish by then, we're all set.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Natasha, Wednesday morning?
This, this Wednesday? No, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, the 20th.
At 11?
No, my, my dentist appointment is 11, earlier than 11.
I could do, I, I could do 10.
Sure.
Sure.
As long as it's going to be a brief meeting because I, I just have to run up.
Sorry, sorry. Let me just make sure I'm on the right week, the 20th. Yeah, I could do, I could do 10.
All right, I'll reach out to Karen because we'll definitely need her.
Okay, the 20th and 10, if it works for Karen, we're good. Thank you.
Very good. I am continuing to work towards coming up with a list of some planning initiatives and then we'll put together a process that we can start in the fall. You know, tackling some of these issues. Some will be able to do administratively and some will have to do by meeting. Natasha, I'll probably reach out to you separately because what you sent off was very helpful.
Okay.
The inclusionary work that we'll do. Any other reports from any other members?
Actually, Adam, I would like to request is I'm having a hard time finding, I'm not sure what. I would like, I would like to. I'd like. I would like to request for what was presented to the public last year on the Muzzy rezoning. When that was again, when that was presented to public.
Oh, you asked. You asked.
Yeah, there was. There was a. There was a PDF file slash PowerPoint file put together. And for like me, I don't know where it is.
So it's it's on the plate. Alex may be able to better direct, but I think it's on the planning site. And then.
I mean, this is the one that has one of the latest, the latest iteration before town meeting where we're showing the possibilities of housing and. You know, every everything, you know, the the very latest.
I think Artie already asked me this and I sent what I could find and it wasn't what he was looking for.
It did. I did not have. It did not have any of the visuals of what the what the town has.
What visuals? Do you mean the work that Natasha had done?
Possibly, yeah. I mean, it was. It was a visual of the site.
She didn't do. She did. Natasha, if I remember correctly, you mocked up some sample.
Scenarios.
Development site plans, but I don't think you did architectural renderings.
No, we just basically did blocks.
Yes.
To show, but that's it. And and Lee has has everything because she's the one that presented it, you know.
And then Artie, I recall that you had present. You had presented some render.
And anything I had was anything I had was not that. I'm very specifically talking about the ones that were presented by the planning board to. The public in the in the public. Yes, no, yes, there were. There were public meetings presented to the public showing what redevelopment could look like. And so I.
Do you know what he's referring to?
I don't, but you know, Artie, we could look at the meeting you're talking about because there'll be a tape of that.
It wasn't. It wasn't the actual planning board meeting, not the one I'm referring to. I'm referring to one where there was. There was a there was a separate. Presentation to the public on either one or two different times.
Talking about. Are you talking about the meeting? That I ran in January, then on behalf of the Needham Heights Neighborhood Association?
It might have been that, but then then I think there was. Then I think the the housing aspect of it came into play. Maybe a month or month or two after that meeting. So then there was a mockup of showing what the redevelopment could look like with housing.
I don't think. I don't think the town had done any.
To the public by. By yourself. In this case, it would have been by yourself.
But I mean, all so that so I I chaired a community meeting in January. That invited members of the community and it was a discussion with no visuals. And it was with members of the planning board, which I was not a member of yet. And.
I'm talking about. I'm talking about last. Last year, it would have been. I'm talking about last year, I believe. Yes, it was finally the Muzzy. Wasn't the Muzzy zoning boat along finally last year? Wasn't that when it was voted on?
Oh.
Yes, yes.
All I would have is what was is what was presented by the planning board.
I I don't. I guess I'm. I don't quite understand why. Why? I don't see why. I'm a little baffled of why it's not sitting somewhere.
I don't think we're clear on what on what your what document you're referring.
It was. It was a mockup of what the what the site could look like with potential housing.
Well, Artie, let me. Let me ask a question because there were several meetings. And I recall Marion Cooley, wasn't she chairing it planning a group of? But.
Working group?
A working group. There was, yeah, Marion Cooley chaired a working group and you served on it, Adam. And and then we. Proposed the zoning. And said, this is what we're going to propose to town meeting. And sent that to the select board, you know, the usual routine. You send it to the select board. Then it goes back to us to have the hearing. So that hearing, the hearing on the proposed zoning would have been the final thing that we were presenting at a planning board meeting.
And I I built a deck for that for that because I led on behalf of the planning board that effort or that meeting. Well, I have. I have a PowerPoint and that. I don't know if that's what you're referring to, but it didn't really contain renderings. It just.
Oh, well, then 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 there's something missing and I'm quite baffled by it. I don't want to say it. I mean, Jean, you were referring to. There was. So there was a mockup or presentation with their pages within that presentation that possibly went through this. Like what after there was this discussion of adding housing to. So at some point, at some points, at some point, give or take a month before town meeting, give or take. There was a visuals made up showing what the housing could look like at as the addition of housing could look like at that site.
And and Artie, did you go on the website to see all the past for the past two years, all the presentations and see if you found it there or it wasn't?
Well, I I just looked at the presentation for when it was presented to town meeting. I looked at that. I looked at that video.
But there were other presentations at other planning board meetings that had more information and then it was condensed. For that one. So I would just look at the other. I would just go to the planning board website and just. Look at see the agenda, you know, when you click on it and see if it's in there and then because it might be in there.
But maybe maybe Lee, Lee or Alex could help in just narrowing it down to the planning board meetings at which there was a substantive discussion. And then tell Artie these dates and then he can.
And he can look at this.
Alex and I were trying to help, but I don't know what Alex what Alex sent, but you know, anything that was presented at a planning board meeting, you know, would have been. In part of the agenda package.
Oh, wait, hold on. Let me just pull something out. This is it. Hold on one second.
Adam, do you need me? I have to drive for hours.
I know that's fine.
We'll still have a quorum.
Okay.
Safe drive.
Good night. Drive safely. So I'm going to share. Where's? Hold on one second. So I'm not sure if you can see.
I see the Excel file. I was just showing for some.
No, that's that was from my work stuff. Just had a. I'm going to stop sharing. Okay, so this. Is this? Is this what you're referring to?
Well, there would. There would have been aerial shots unless I'm not sure. I can't see close enough what's going on there.
This is all part of the deck that. The town prepared as a part of the work. Natasha had, you know, had blocks.
There was something very specific where there's an aerial. So giving an idea what what it could look like with with housing as an addition to it. Maybe that's maybe it's within there. I don't know.
That looks very promising. I don't know.
That was, I mean, my initial.
What was the date of that set, Adam?
January twenty one, twenty.
It would have been. It would have been after that. Absolutely would have been after that because housing was not introduced.
So this is. So just to be clear, so. She didn't design homes. She just put in.
I understand that.
I just want to be. So for clarity, Ari, are you saying this image is not an example of what you are looking for?
Not not likely because he is. It was very. Yes, it was not homes, but it was very specifically a month or so before the town meeting when the housing. Option was added in there, so it could not have been at the January meeting.
I think. I'm not sure, Lee, if that's context. Is correct because I thought that we had. Sample options than that. Yeah, here. So Natasha in January already did have a model if residential was included.
Okay.
So it's.
Okay. Maybe that'll serve the purpose then. It says multiple dwellings, if that makes use, if that's referring to.
This is mixed.
Excuse. Excuse means housing with. You know, with.
Mixed uses as well. I mean, but it's also mixed use right now with with with. With. Lab with lab, office, retail space. That's mixed use as well.
There are different forms of mixed use, but my point is.
You said to be say housing.
But this, it does already.
This one has residential. Yeah, you're pointing to it right now.
And Adam, that'll probably. That'll probably be fine. Yeah, that'll probably serve the purpose.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, Adam, I think that'll serve the purpose.
Okay, so so are you? This is part of the packet already. That you can pull down from the site. For the. January twenty one, twenty twenty one meeting. If you know, do you know how to pull down our agenda items from the our website?
Yeah, I'll go down. I'll go down to the different agendas, meeting times. So it's January twenty one?
Yeah.
Twenty one of twenty one.
It's a large file. It's over twenty four megabytes, so I wouldn't be able to handle it through their system.
No, that's not too big. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, that'll be. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Is there something you want to look at while we're while I have it up?
No, I mean, it's really. I just. I'm just looking at all. Volume of site. I'm just looking at volume of site. People are looking at volume of everything. We're looking at volume of everything. We're looking at the proposed business offices or proposed parking. I'm just looking at. It's a volume thing. That's all.
And so I don't want to get into the substantive.
No, there's no, no, we don't.
Something that, okay, so you should be able to get that from. Lee and Alex, can you see the name of the file that's consistent with how?
I don't understand what you're asking. It's in a. It's you. You have the packet open.
I. Yes. Okay, I just wanted to verify that this was actually a meeting packet.
Well, if you if you pulled it off the website, it was a meeting packet.
I don't remember where I pulled it off from like over a year ago, but nevertheless.
Adam, no, this is not. I have not. Adam, I appreciate that. I know this. This will serve the purpose.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, the correspondence that we've received, just moving to our next item. Was an email that was sent from, I believe his name was Tom Harkins, who spoke at our public hearing on breweries. It wasn't a public hearing. It was just a public meeting. And he had some additional comments that he submitted to the planning board that were subsequently submitted and recently submitted to us. So we have that for the record.
But just to be clear, if that's the thing I sent you today, I just sent it to you and Jean as chair and vice chair. And it did not put it in the packets. I was going to put it in the packets for when you actually hold a hearing on the brewery.
You. I think you mentioned that you were going to include it in the packet, so.
Yeah, so the so the rest of the board did not get that.
All right, so.
It's not part of the agenda package for tonight. We had no correspondence in the package for tonight.
Okay, so I we have no correspondence in the package tonight, but I thought that sometimes we receive something after the packet date that we. Mentioned. Okay, so. I think with this, could I have a motion to? Adjourn.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll come to the vote. Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are unanimously decided to adjourn.
Again.
Thank you all.
Okay, again, see you later.